The conclusion of this evening, the hearing will be held open for written comment only for a period of approximately thirty days, that would be to the second meeting in May, which would be May twenty-fourth. That will be confirmed at the conclusion of the public hearing. So I just want everybody to understand that there's also going to be a time limit. Based on the number of people who've signed in, it'll likely be five minutes for a speaker, but your comments have to be directed to the town board, rather, to the planning board, please. And though this shouldn't have to be said, I will say it, please be respectful and mindful of others. Thank you.
And Mr. Plotsky will be reading the names off the list. Thank you, sir. All right. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Public hearing notice.
Yeah, you first.
Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Town of Deer Park Planning Board, Orange County, New York pursuant to Article seven of the Town of Deer Park zoning law on an application for a site plan review. The application affects the following premises: Record owners, Sinshi G Corporation, applicant New Century Film, tax map designation, Section fifty, Block one, Lot thirty-eight point two-three, zone designation, Hamlet mixed-use. Description of application: Mixed-use hotel, restaurant, and parking garage located at five-seventeen Never Sink Drive, Port Jervis, New York, one-two-seven-seven-one. Information on this application can be viewed at the Town Clerk's office, Town of Deer Park, four-twenty Route two-oh-nine, Huguenot, New York. The hearing shall take place at seven o'clock P.M. on the twenty-sixth day of April twenty-twenty-three at the Town of Deer Park Senior Center located at four-ten Route two-oh-nine, Town of Deer Park, Orange County, New York, or soon thereafter as practicable. All parties wishing to be heard shall be heard at that time.
We got Glenn, just, excuse me, a second. We kind of got that one in front of the cart in front of the horse. We did, just to make a motion to open the public hearing. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll second it.
Five seconds. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, that's Amanda. Do you have certified mailings? Are they all, in recent, they're all in order?
Yes, they are.
All right. We got the floor.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, Mr. Plotsky, Mr. Fusco, Ms. Court, my name is Michael Bluestein. I'm from the law firm of Bluestein Shapiro Frank &amp; Barone in Gosha, New York. We represent the applicant. We're here tonight to present to the public what we view as a very exciting project for the Town of Deer Park. Excellent mixed-use project that will bring a lot of jobs and creatibles into this town. We've been before this board, I believe, four times, and we've made a lot of submissions. We've gone back and forth with the town consultants, engineers, the board, and we're finally at the point now where we believe that we're ready to hear from the public and get their concerns so that we can adequately address them. I want to reiterate that to the public that this project is permitted by the town zoning as a matter of right, subject to the planning board granting a site use, a site plan approval, special use permit. The, it's all, all the uses are under, are permitted under the zoning. There's no use, there's no use, zone changes needed. All the bulk requirements are met. It's a large parcel, so there's not one area of variance of any type needed. Everything is permitted as a matter pursuant to your local code. So as I said, we've been here, I think this is our fourth time. We've had a great reception with the, with the planning board so far. We've done a lot of engineering. We've assembled an excellent team of local professionals. We have Ryan Fellonzer and Joe Bruning here from Fellonzer Engineering. They're going to be the lead engineers for the project. We have Mr. Steve Mafia, who's our traffic consultant, who's prepared a report, and it's been submitted to the board. And we also have Mr. John Brest and Mike Gaiella from Delaware Engineering, who've designed the wastewater system for the project. So they're all sitting in the front row, where I'll be sitting to the left. And again, we're excited to hear from the public, hear what they may have to say so that we can adequately address it, so that any environmental concerns that may be raised, we can properly address at the appropriate time with our team of excellent professionals. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Ryan, Ryan Fellonzer, who's been in charge of designing the project, and he can give the public a little bit more, better idea of what's proposed.
Thank you, Mike. My name is Ryan Fellonzer with Fellonzer Engineering, Midtown, New York. I'd like to give a brief description of the project, if that's okay with the board and the Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Great.
Is that the, when you set out, right there?
That is my cover letter. Yes, it's basically reflective of my cover letter.
Thank you.
Yep. So New Century Films proposing improvements to their current site at five-seventeen Never Sink Drive. In summary, the following uses are proposed as denoted on the site plans. Use A, residential, which is original to site. B1 is denoted as an eight-room hotel, retail store, and restaurant, which was approved by the board in twenty-twenty-one. B2 is a multipurpose building, which is to now include a film screening hall with thirty-five-hundred seats. B3 is eighty-five-room hotel and costume workshop with use of an existing subterranean shooting range. B4, restaurants, which would be new construction. C, film studios, two of them, which are also new construction. A wastewater treatment plant, which will be new, that would be able to handle the effluent loading for the new uses. E, which is a flea market and vendor area with temporary parking, also approved recently in twenty-eighteen by the board, and a new four-to-five-story parking structure. In an effort to mitigate potential attacks to stormwater runoff, threaten endangered species, traffic, historical resources, and wastewater, the applicant has engaged with regional professionals, as Mike has noted, to evaluate the surrounding environment in nearby residents. To date, we have completed a traffic study by Mr. Mafia, which was sent to DOT and County DPW for their comment, and his report has no negative impact to the level of service. Endangered species report, which was conducted by Mr. Peter D. Torgerson, and that was also sent to DEC for their comment, and again, no negative impacts to endangered species. We have a site lighting plan in development. We are using Kentsadaski with Acuity Brands to help us formulate that plan, and we'll be utilizing LED fixtures that are nitrile friendly compliant and meet town zoning. We have submitted a stormwater pollution prevention plan to Mr. Fusco in his office for review, and has also been sent to the DEC for their review. Effluent limits for approximately fifty thousand gallons per day have been established with the DEC recently, with the help of John and Mike at Delaware Engineering, and the speed permit for the wastewater treatment plant will be forthcoming. And last but not least, we have conducted a Phase One and Two archaeological survey by Tracker Archaeology, and that was recently sent to SHPO for their review. I have a copy with it, of that report with me tonight that I could give to the board, and no additional testing or analysis was warranted on the site based on their conclusion. The goal of these studies is to provide appropriate mitigation measures for any identified environmental impacts that can be implemented into the overall design of the site plan, and also be in compliance with town zoning requirements. At this time, we feel that our application is robust enough to begin receiving feedback from the public, which we look forward to in this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Any comments or concerns from the board? Anything from professionals with Plotsky or Alfred? Well, in that case, we can actually go ahead and, and open the public hearing portion for the project.
The first individual signed in is Robert Zeller.
I live at three-ninety-five, I live at three-ninety-five Never Sink Drive, Port Jervis, or one mile down the river from the proposed project. I'm here tonight to say I applaud New Century Film for investing in Deer Park. However, I do have concerns with some areas of the project before the planning board tonight. I'm not sure if corrected that the section lot and block numbers were wrong in three parcels, with Demi Last and Navardo. Site plan C zero-zero-one, I'm sure carried through on others. Location of the sewage plant, being constructed closest to the residential area of Route two-oh-nine, controlled based on system operator, ensuring chemical is added, failure results in high odor when system is not balanced. This is a serious quality of life issue for everyone in the surrounding area. No deodorant at the other end of Never Sink Drive. More insurance need to be put in place by the planning board to not have bookends. I spoke to a longtime employee of DEP that runs the plant Never Sink Drive that confirmed my comment. In addition, Viola, a company that operates a number of sewage plants, six wastewater seeds. Six mistakes facilities make, used as a reference below. No formalized process control plan would stand operating procedure, having consistent testing and audit schedules that are well-understood and easy to follow are vital to the, to ensure the reliability production process. A lot of, lot of one person with knowledge can be detrimental to wastewater operations. When results are out of range, the need for clear steps for the operator to mitigate the process. No maintenance or computerized maintenance maturely impact production. Equipment maintenance is critical to ensuring optimal operation. Failure to do regular maintenance can prematurely age equipment and cause a plant shutdown. High chemical dose, in the first sign of trouble, some operators will overcompensate by adding more chemicals than needing. That can cause additional problems. An example, operators may add whole mark to address the problem, but if too much was added, a negative charge can actually prevent, and I'm not going to try and announce fluctuation, fluctuation and make the problem worse. Inefficient energy use, many facilities tend to overuse air air aspirants or blowers and act as sludge process. Oxygen is needed to feed bugs with aerobic treatment. Most cases, typically, the amount of air used is far more than necessary. Airation and pumping stations tend to represent largest power users. Ignoring pH balance, an imbalance of pH is problematic on its own because it can affect NPDES compliance, but is also important, keeping a delicate chemistry in your wastewater balance so it doesn't impact other pollutants in the wastewater system. Overload of sludge. Balanced sludge inventory is vital to preventing a variety of pollutants from causing exceedance. Balanced sludge volumes correctly contributes to the highest performance. Sludge banks should be a frequent measure. Above needs to be considered when allowing this facility to be built relating to the operation of the town's investments to its residents. This combined with deodor issue needs more review as to the impact on the community in general. Retention pond location, clearly on your site panic plan, C dash one-on-one, it indicates the location of the retention pond is within a flood zone, A E flood elevation four forty. Let me point out that this elevation has exceeded ten times within fifteen years. My readings are from the NOAA website, and they start at four-three, four-twenty-eight, four-six, three-nine, as you can see in, in my handout. As you can clearly see, the place, the retention pond, underwater to be shared downstream. These readings do not include ice jams that historically happened yearly. I have personally seen the river during ice jams and raises the river ten to fifteen feet in hours to minutes. With this information listed above, clearly it requires additional impact review to the community and its residents, and possibly a relocation of the retention pond. I might point out that the proposed parking garage also falls into this flood range. Needs review of location as pollutants from vehicles, oil, gas, antifreeze will go to the ground wastewater or storm drain systems. During heavy rainstorms, combined sewers receive a high amount of normal flow. Treatment plants are unable to handle flows that are more than twice their design capacity with the current mixture of water untreated sewage discharges into the waterways. What impact long-term untreated sewage discharge into the waterways? What impact long-term does this have on the river and its residents along? Additional study or review needs to be done to ensure we don't ruin our natural resources.
I'm sorry, Mr. Zeller. Your five minutes are up. Your handout will be distributed to the board and to the applicants. Thank you.
Okay. And it will be submitted as part of the public record.
I, I would respectfully ask that I could finish, because I'm not speaking well because of some health issues.
I'll get your next.
Okay. Traffic impact study, if you look at the traffic, thank you, Matt. Happened, quick search shows many towns and cities didn't protect their natural resources, and paying a high price, the planning board needs to make sure the community is protected. Traffic impact study, page one through six, if you look at the traffic study, it was completed, it brings up some questions. The study was completed one day during the hours of seven-nine-four to six, doesn't actually show the flow of traffic. This is only a concern if and when events are taking place. The study used twenty percent reduction for those entering and exiting sites. However, the number of visitors can exceed twenty percent easily, take moonfests that gathers large amount of attendees. All effects counted, A eighty, but Route two-oh-nine.
Then you stop, Bobby. Don't rush, just take your time.
Has many more outside the three-year use. The planning board needs to review and request additional impact reviews to make sure these numbers don't increase. I know other agencies are involved, however, the people at Deer Park have greater concerns that can keep the community or residents safe. Summary, I believe I pointed out the need for more review of this large-scale plan, and it's entirely before approval, with a full environmental impact study to be completed before the project begins. Operator qualification data review of sewage operator can have the additional town requirements, and I ask the planning board to put this in place before approval. I would question the endangered gold eagles nesting in their review. Only one spotted, look across the river, Sea Large Nest area besides the homes, go down the river to the drug rehab, another nest, beyond Conicopi, another nest. We have several that fly around daily. Many questions and impacts not to request a long form or major impact study should be completed. Closing, a sewage plant that was previously blew by the town that goes belly up like the water districts, does the town end up taking them over as we are now seeing more and more coming to our town? Town planning board needs to consider before moving forward with this project. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
I've had, in my family, there have been eleven town supervisors here in Deer Park. One of them was my great-great-grandfather, who surveyed just about all of Deer Park, and he never had a survey challenge. He surveyed from age sixteen to eighty-six, died at a hundred. Come from a family that has artists and it has people who deal in facts. My mother was a reference librarian, my father was a lawyer with the National Labor Relations Board. We've been stewards of the land, particularly Guymar Lake, for a very, very long time. I'm hoping all those eleven supervisors are listening. This project, which began as a film studio, and which we encouraged and were happy about, and I was invited to give a critique of one of their first films, albeit though they hadn't had a permit yet, and was invited to help on their flea market. It has morphed. It is now something else. It's a horse of a different color. It's a pastiche, I think, of mold development. I think this is the first step to suburbanizing this township, and if we're going to support and protect our resources, I don't see how this expansion into restaurants and hotels can add to the rural and the, the character, positive character of, of this area. Now, I talk about the hotel because I followed this project very closely from the beginning. There was a desire to have a hotel on the property. The hotel was for home. Now, I have background in the film business. Most people who work on films do not want to stay on the site where they work twelve hours on a film. They want to go off, go to a bar, be elsewhere for the evening. But this, things kept coming up. The space was to be an SRO. They were to be dormitories, motel residences in that same building that is now to become an eighty-five-room hotel. So my question is, who is this for? There's a question as also in this project about the labor. Is the labor going to be paying prevailing wages for the construction here? Are these going to be union jobs? I think that's a concern of the community. It's certainly one of my concerns. One thing about film production, it's not very environmental. For instance, you have costume shops, you have dyeing, you have microplastics in the fabrics. Is this waste? And you have chemicals. There's lots of chemicals, and the Luon plywood used for temporary structures. There's a lot of waste. So I think that needs to be taken into consideration for this project. And I think we need to have everyone think about, what do we want the, to want next thirty, forty, fifty years of Deer Park to be like? And though there may not be traffic jams if it's in its early stages, when you have events, you will be overwhelmed. So I, I'm winding down. Okay. Pardon?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Good. Thirty seconds. The environmental issues are very strong. The Never Sink is stressed. It's advised that you only eat four fish from the Never Sink a month. And the saltification of the river is upon us. Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Kevin Dragonchuck. I'm a professional engineer. I'm president of CEA Engineers in Bloomberg, New York, and at the request of Deer Park Borough Alliance and New York Environment Comp, CEA Engineers evaluated potential for significant adverse environmental impacts in accordance with SECR, related to land disservice and construction activities, including in the special flood hazard area of the Never Sink, wastewater generation, collection, management, treatment, voluntary and active construction, and wastewater generation and treatment. Based on the, on the evaluation, New Century Film and its proposed environmental impact mitigation measures present numerous potential significant adverse environmental impacts. In sum, New Century Film's current submission to the planning board for March eighth is incomplete. The EF Part One lacks essential details. It lacks essential design documents, such as a design report for the wastewater treatment plant, site plans beyond draft prints that are suitable for construction, and a final and complete SWIP, which was identified as a draft copy. It's wholly inadequate to mitigate the adverse environmental impacts resulting from New Century Film. To start, in regards to wastewater treatment, proposed fifty thousand gallon per day onsite wastewater treatment plant. In the most recent submission, there is no actual design. The discussion is conceptual at best. The most recent submission did not include speediness permit application, which New York State DEC will use to define effluent limits, and those effluent limits will drive the design. The Never Sink River itself is tributary to the Delaware River. The Delaware River Basin Commission will also have additional oversight on top of New York State DEC, and that could bring more stringent effluent limits. There was no design or discussion of sludge management and disposal or order control systems. There was no discussion of the ongoing operation, maintenance, and asset management that would be essential for making sure that wastewater is properly treated, that the effluent meets its effluent limits, and that the discharges are protective of the water quality and best uses of the Never Sink and the Delaware. Importantly, the legal owner of the wastewater treatment plant was not identified, and that entity would be responsible for the ongoing operation, maintenance, and asset management that was discussed here. In regards to stormwater, again, in the post, after construction, the SWIP is still discussed as preliminary or draft. Includes no green infrastructure practices. It relies upon treatment of stormwater in two detention ponds totaling two-point-one acres, so pretty big ponds. New York State DEC water quality and runoff reduction volumes are not met. Detention ponds do not provide runoff reduction as per New York State DEC. And runoff reduction is very important to mitigate environmental measures. It's meant to mimic pre-construction hydrology and result in groundwater recharge. Importantly, there's a new New York State DEC Stormwater Management Design Manual in the works, a draft was issued in May of twenty-twenty-two. The final version is expected, is expected in fall of this year. It will include numerous new planning, design, and treatment standards. These standards will be the industry standard for stormwater management and treatment in New York State. New Century is constructed and applies for permit coverage. These are the standards that we have to meet. During construction, erosion center control is the main concern. The current plan is inadequate. The plans show silt fence and construction entrances as only BMPs, and there's numerous elements still to be detailed in the SWIP, such as soil stabilization techniques. There are no required winter stabilization measures that are necessary for construction activities between November fifteenth and April fifteenth. In short, the Never Sink water quality and its best uses are at risk from stormwater discharges. The pollutants they can discharge include sediment, turbidity, trash, fluid petroleum spills, and metals. Importantly, the Never Sink is already potentially impaired for cabbing a heavy metal in accordance with the latest water quality assessment from New York State DEC.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Additionally, there's developments proposed in the flood plain, four-story parking garage, detention ponds, parking areas, roadways, and that that development's directly adjacent to the regulated floodway of the Never Sink. This results in enhanced flood risks. Higher flood levels and velocities downstream to debris transport, expansion of the flood plain itself. There's been no analysis in the latest submission regarding the increased flooding risk. In conclusion, a positive declaration should be issued, a full environmental impact statement required, and I thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight.
Also, to the, also to the record, this gentleman submitted a thirty-page report that was received by the board this afternoon. Board members all have a copy. It will be made part of the public record. The copy will be, copy will be provided to the applicants. The copy will be provided to the applicants' consultants.
And we will include this part of the public record.
Thank you very much.
Alex Silla.
Members of the planning board, members of the public. So, my name's Alex Silla. I'm the founder, director of a New York State environmental nonprofit, NY Environment Com, which serves as the fiscal sponsor of the Deer Park Rural Alliance. We work on land use issues in Orange, Olive, and the Salt, Ulster Counties. Been doing this for about five years. Before that, I've been in the recycling environmental issue industry for about 15 years now, going on a little more than that, you know, about 17, 18. So, we see this as a two-track issue. So first of all, there's the application here, which, as Kevin pointed out, you know, Michael up next on traffic will point out, there's many deficiencies in this application, many things that are uncertain, many things that are unclear. But then there's a question of land use. Deer Park is a town. It's a rural town in a rural area. This is an urban project. But when you're in a rural area, you have rural infrastructure. And we have a few other projects here that are already stressing that infrastructure. We have some pollution of water. We have some other things. We have the battery factory that many years has still been straightened out. So because of these projects, we have a legacy of disturbance that has yet to be found. Where we add another urban project, we're adding to that. We can't necessarily mitigate all the things that are here. How can we add another one of this scale? You know, hotels, it's 1,300 parking spaces, paved parking spaces, a four-story structure. It's a wastewater treatment plant. It's a city, and there's other proposed actions nearby that need to be taken into account that have equally dense construction, that will have those on the banks of the Neversink. We're 100 feet from the Neversink in some parts, which has its issues, but is one of the better rivers in New York as well. We have 50 miles, and it's in better shape. It doesn't need the pressure to, you know, we don't want to turn it into the Hudson, do we, or the Delaware? You know, we're still working on those issues over here. You know, we want to keep it where it is and deal with that. So we have to take all those into consideration. With that, there needs to be a full environmental impact statement. There needs to be a hard look at all these issues. There needs to be a hard look at the plans, what the town as a rural community, which I imagine desires to keep its rural character. I hope that for the town, and I know a lot of the members of the public feel that way too. So, you know, it's a farm originally. This is not a farm. This is not a rural project. This is a completely different thing. It needs to be looked at, and a decision needs to be made if that's what we want for the town and at what level. So let's get environmental statement. Let's move the process forward on that, but let's make sure we look at everything. We look at it a hard way, and we do things, whatever we done is done in the right way. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michael Monteleone, senior vice president with Simcoe Engineering. And at the request of Deer Park Rural Alliance and the New York Environment Com, Simcoe Engineering reviewed the traffic impact study that was conducted for the proposed project located at 517 Neversink Drive. The following deficiencies have been identified after reviewing the consultant report. The existing traffic counts are low because the site is not currently operating with all approved land uses open for business. The site is gated and closed to the public. Projected traffic from several previously approved land uses in 2021 within the site, including the hotel, retail, and restaurant that serve the public, should be added to the no build traffic background traffic volumes. Based on the area, it does not seem plausible that 500 seats of fine dining restaurant could be supported at the site. A high turnover restaurant generating more traffic seems more appropriate. The traffic counts were conducted during a day when there were no events held inside. The multipurpose building should be analyzed as a performance venue with a maximum of 3,500 attendees representing the reasonably worst-case traffic scenario. There are currently no restrictions in place for when a major 3,500 attendee performance could be held at the site, including weeknights. Traffic from reasonably foreseeable background projects in the area, including Riverside Park, townhomes, and the 515 Plaza Development, should be included in the no build traffic volumes so that the planning board can fully understand and appreciate the cumulative effect of these large developments to area traffic. Simcoe Engineering conducted an independent analysis of the PM peak hour using Simcoe, which is the same software that the applicant used. Based upon the results of our analysis, the reasonable worst-case scenario, traffic from a 3,500 attendee performance event held in the multipurpose building, the development proposed as part of the current application would cause poor levels of service on the area roadways, extensive delays, and queuing and area interceptions during the PM peak hour. Extensive queuing would emanate from the site as entering vehicles to a performance are processed and are assigned to a parking space. This queuing would create hazardous conditions on Neversink Drive and Route 209 as traffic flow would be severely interrupted and vehicle conflicts would increase greatly. These hazardous conditions caused by a 3,500 attendee performance event of the multipurpose building would occur on Saturdays and Sundays as well. The traffic study did not address construction conditions, including workers traveling to the site, trucks coming in at the site, and equipment. The traffic study analyzed the multipurpose building used for small film screenings, but this does not represent the reasonably worst-case traffic scenario and significantly underestimates the effect of the New Century Film site on area traffic. In conclusion, the applicant should revise the traffic study to include projected traffic from approved but unopened site developments, reasonably foreseeable background projects in the area, and a 3,500 attendee performance event held in the multipurpose building on a weekday and Saturday. Thank you very much for your time.
And this will also be part of the public record too. Just so it's clear, what he just waved around was a report prepared by Simcoe.
Oh, sorry, yes.
That's okay. That reportedly made part of the record and provided to the applicants. Anne Prather.
Hey there.
It was right first on that. Shouldn't have tried to correct you.
My name is Anne Prather. I have lived in the area for over 20 years. I reside at 85 Guy March Turnpike. I had some concerns that I had written down, but I realized that I'm not that knowledgeable in the traffic study that they referred to or some of the studies about the environment. But I did still want to get up and just express my concern about the size of this project in this town. It does not seem, as the gentleman said before me, the size of the project does not seem to fit in our rural community. And I do have concerns about the river. I remember when we were flooded and when you went down 209 and you looked over at the bus garages at Port Jervis, they were totally underwater at that time. And who knows what the future will bring for flooding in our area, as that seems to be a concern. So I just wanted to get up and ask the board to really look into the future and see if this project fits. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you. I live in Otisville, but hopefully maybe one day I can...
Can you just say your name for the record, please?
Yes, James H. White. But hopefully one day I can be a homeowner here. I've just recently started helping out GIN over at New Century Festivals. As you know, they've done a bunch of successful festivals, but we're going to be doing a Fourth of July festival, and I'm going to try and bring this into what the evening's about. But I think when you want to get to the heart of what a project is about, you got to look at the people. And GIN, if you haven't had the chance to meet her, she's one of the sweetest, kindest, most hardworking people I know. And she is an open book. She's available to me with anybody here at the town, and you know where she works. I'm available as well. Of course, we're pretty busy putting together festivals, but, you know, we had an opportunity to push this Fourth of July festival to next year, but actually, we want to do something special for the town. And it's called the America the Beautiful Festival, and we're going to have the largest fireworks display in Deer Park. We're going to try and have a lot of fun things to do. But what we're also really trying to do is support the traditions of this region and also the traditions of this country. And that's actually a very sincere part of who we are. And from a deeper level, if you look back at traditions, you look at the Golden Age, the Renaissance, you look at the Tang Dynasty in China, those two, those high points of Western and Eastern culture, they are aligned with nature. So I also, just getting back to what we're talking about tonight, I started reading the Town of Deer Park Comprehensive Plan, and there was a section 3.0 and 3.1, the plans of land use and economic development. I just wanted to read this mainly because I think it perfectly aligns with what New Century wants to do. The Town of Deer Park desires to become a full partner in the development of the tri-state area by working with its neighbors to extend infrastructure and coordinate public services. The town hopes to attract compatible businesses and industries needed by the tri-state area. It is expected this will help to balance the town tax base, provide new jobs closer to home for town residents, and reduce the need for travel outside the region. The town specifically desires to increase tourism as a source of economic development, taking advantage of the town's natural and man-made attractions and resources. So just breaking that down, Town of Deer Park Economic Objective Number One: Balance Deer Park's Tax Base. New Century is already one of Deer Park's biggest taxpayers. New Century's expansion projects will add significant revenue for the town's tax base, allowing more funds to be spent on local schools, roads, infrastructure, et cetera. New expansion projects could also potentially lower taxes for other Deer Park businesses. Economic Objective Number Two: Provide new jobs closer to home for town residents and reduce the need for travel outside of the region. New Century's expansion projects will bring 35-plus full-time jobs and additional part-time jobs so local residents can work conveniently near home, be near their families, and save on travel expenses. Economic Objective Number Three: Increase tourism as a source of economic development, taking advantage of the town's natural and man-made attractions
30 seconds.
and resources. New Century's Beautiful Outdoor Property has already attracted more than 50,000 patrons to our events since 2018. New Century continues to produce more festivals, such as America's Beautiful Festival on July 1st and 2nd, where we expect 20,000-plus people over two days to celebrate Independence Day. Expansion projects, a hotel, parking lot, a hotel, parking garage, concert hall, and restaurant will significantly boost tourism to Deer Park.
Tourists Time's up.
They'll spend money, and then, and it doesn't drain because they're tourists. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dave Ochsinski, Fort Forest Drive, Fort Jervis.
Could you speak up a little bit, sir?
Sure. Dave Ochsinski, Fort Forest Drive, Deer Park, Fort Jervis. What concerns I have, I grew up in Paramus and worked, lived there, lived in Westover 36 years before moving up here about a year ago. In Paramus, working there, I worked for a long-term care facility, a little work with Diola, again there. But it is, Paramus has a population of 26,000 residents. During the daytime, Paramus, when I grew up, there's still cornfields and cows in Paramus, about this long, you know, area, the daytime population goes to 250,000. Looking at a similar thing here where population here is about 9,000, I believe, and then you're going to have 3,500-room hotel, plus 3,500 theater, plus 500-seat restaurants. So you're, it's a significant increase. How is the impact, what does the impact, does it expire, PMS on that? How is that going to be addressed? What else? Westover, that was an admissible utility facility, six sewage tanks, as this gentleman here.
I need a microphone, dear pal. Sorry, I can't hear you back.
Okay.
Sorry.
No problem. As this gentleman here
There you go.
mentioned, it can be very problematic. Plants were old in Westover, eventually wound up selling them, we gave up and sold the historical authority to Suez, now sold it to Diola because it took millions of dollars to upgrade, maintain, and keep those plants going. They go south very quick. Takes a lot of work to keep those things going right. 50,000 downward plants in front of our community, and we're getting major problems with this. The other thing to notice in the applicant's endangered species review, that was done in 2021, it does not mention, it says in here, there's no disturbances planned. That was not the same. He did not review the project before 4:00 tonight. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak. My name is Thomas Brunel. I've been a resident of this area for 23 years. For the past six years, I've been a resident of the Town of Deer Park. I live in Sparabush. I'm going to start out by saying that I respect all of the technical issues that have been raised tonight by all of the folks who have spoken before me, and I consider them technical issues because as with any development project, there will always be a list of technical issues that need to be addressed and need to be resolved. I personally am confident that technical issues such as the ones that have been discussed can be resolved, and it is my hope that this project is allowed to move forward because I think it's good for our community for some of the reasons that one of the prior speakers talked. I'm not a, I'm not a neighbor of the property that is in question, not an immediate neighbor, but I am a town resident. I'm a taxpayer. I'm not a scientist. I'm not an engineer. I'm not someone who works for or runs an environmental group. I'm just a taxpayer and a person that lives here in Deer Park. I love this community. It's a beautiful community, and I think that it would be improved with the approval and the development of this project. I have personally attended many events on-site at this location over the last 23 years. I've attended events where thousands of people were present. You may remember that there were carnivals and all sorts of events. I can't remember a single time where I had to wait in line in my car to get onto the premises, or a single time where there was, where there were premises, or a single time where there was, where there were traffic jams or major holdups along the road. And I believe that the owners of this property have a track record of doing well for the community, and they, and I believe that going forward, they would uphold that as well. So thank you for hearing me out. Thank you.
Harold Rose?
I'm going to yield my opportunity to speak. My concern-
Thank you, sir. Mark Long?
My name is Mark Long. I reside at 272 Ratchoozer 9 with my wife Dana. Our property is located, if you look at the map there, to the left of the wastewater treatment plant. So we share the property line with the applicant. Throughout the years, we've had a good worker relationship with the applicant. We've attended some meetings, I guess because they've had projects that were, that they wanted to do, but they were denied. However, even though I appreciate their creativity in this project, we strongly oppose this. It's nice to open up our windows and enjoy the fresh Deer Park air. We've been currently living there for the past fifteen years. Besides the heavy traffic on 209 with the tractor-trailer shick in our house of the foundation, it's a very peaceful community, and we just, we love the surrounding beauty of it. I too agree with, you know, development in certain areas, however, though I do appreciate the beauty of this area more. We talk about this project bringing jobs, what kind of jobs are they gonna bring? How permanent are they gonna be? You talk about construction jobs, well, how long is it gonna take for these individuals to build this? Is it gonna be six months to a year? And then, those construction workers, where are they gonna go next? So it's just, to me, it's a temporary job. We need permanent jobs in this area that used to be here, like the battery plant that was located down the way there that provided really good, decent-paying jobs. As far as the gun range, I'm definitely pro-Second Amendment, but I do currently, I am suffering from anxiety as being a combat veteran of this country. We also have animals, and I think that with the current traffic and the gun rage that's proposed, it would give our animals a lot more anxiety. And I can honestly say, if this project does go through, our house will probably go up for sale. There is no way that we're gonna be able to live next to an area with the smell, I'm sure that's gonna accumulate from that wastewater treatment plant. Again, we have a good worker relationship, you know, with our neighbors, and I think the things that they have going on right now as far as the festivals, that's a good thing. It's great, you know? You have all this area in front of their complexes where you have the green grass. We don't need more asphalt. We don't need more light pollution at night. We don't need more traffic. A parking garage needs reserved for the city. I don't see it, you know, being a part of this community. And again, I'm off for jobs. I think it's the wrong thing, though. I just, how much are they gonna pay? You talk about part-time jobs, thirty-five full-time jobs, it's nothing. It's something, but it's nothing. You know, we need industry here that's gonna provide good-paying jobs, and like I said, why don't you use the site in A and, what is A and D Battery, is that? C, okay, C and D Battery? It's dilapidated. Why don't you build there first? Well, people will say, well, it's cheaper to knock down trees and build something fresher, you know? But sometimes it's not all about money. So respectfully, again, we strongly oppose this project, and again, if, hopefully, you know, this doesn't go forward, if it does go forward, but hopefully it doesn't. Please keep the festivals going like you always have. I think, to me, that's a good sense of community, right there, what you're doing. You have great food, you have great drink, and it's just a great way of the community getting together and, you know, saying hi to one another if we haven't seen each other in a while. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Logan Yellin, are there any others signing to speak? Art Moore?
How you doing? Art Moore, on 30 Frankie Road, a big taxpayer, not affiliated with any of the companies that are here or anything. Concerns are, has already been raised, worries would be about the processing center for where wastewater goes and that stuff. As long as that is freely checked, I don't see an issue with it. I think the business should go forward, as long as everything is addressed that has already been brought up. I see it as a decent thing and help the community come together and diversify. And that's basically all I got. And everything rest on your shoulders for decisions. Make the right ones. That's it. Thank you.
Lauren McCune?
Hello, my name is Lauren McCune. I live at 58 Airport Road in Deer Park, which happens to be right across 209 from New Century. So if there's any more traffic, it'll go right by my house. If there's any smell, it'll be smellable from my house. If there's a new Chinese restaurant, it'll be very convenient for me and my family to eat there. So overall, I'm in favor of the project. I believe it's consistent with the all-over plan for Deer Park that was expressed in the HMU zoning when it was originally created. And one thing that's always hard to get in developing any place, including Deer Park, is adequate capital. So it's great that New Century has been able to gather the capital to do this project. And I'd also point out that in terms of the community being able to handle it, or being a rural community, it may be a rural town, but it's still a town where people live and hopefully where people work and shop. And there are restaurants, even a hotel, I believe, and other enterprises that used to be in Deer Park that aren't here anymore. There's even historically significant film companies in Deer Park. So I don't see this as something completely new. I see it as something, you know, resuming some historical trends that belong in the area. I think there's, listening to people that night, I think there've been two main areas of concern. One is traffic, and one is waste disposal. And as far as traffic, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I think if they're successful in opening a restaurant and so forth, there will be more traffic. But as some people have pointed out, you know, we have had big events in the area and they're able to handle it. The waste issue is more technical, and I'm not able to address it as well as some of the people that have already spoken. But in that area, I have confidence in New Century. Number one, I think they have the resources to construct an adequate waste disposal system. I think they have the intention of establishing, you know, a clean-smelling, environmentally-safe system. And I believe that the technology in this area is constantly improving and evolving, and it will be technologically possible to have, you know, a safe, clean waste disposal fitness system there. And the system that gets installed might not even have been completely invented yet. It's a rapidly evolving field, and I think that's why we have different viewpoints on what could be done, or what should be done, or what might go wrong. And if some of the input from outside groups can help, you know, make a better final waste disposal system, I think that's great. So I strongly support the project. I think it's compatible with what the Town of Deer Park desires, and I hope it goes forward successfully. Thank you.
First hand writing, I can't read. Xenon?
You don't need to sit and remember the last name.
Happy it was in the lead, the first?
Zennan Bell Nicky?
Can you spell that? Sorry.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, no worries. Z E N O N. Last name D as in Donald, O L N Y C K Y J. I live at 293 Frankie Road in Huguenau, New York, just up the road. I'm really happy to come and speak today in support of the new initiative. I first started coming to this area in about 2002, when I had more hair and the hair I had wasn't light. I moved here in 2014 after running a successful business in New York City. So I apologize if that is a stain on my character. I have been called the idiot, and I'm doing my best. I've raised my daughters here, they went to local schools. I'm not an engineer, I'm a dad, and my main concern is my children, their heart and their minds, which I feel is continually being inundated and attacked. And I find that no matter how hard parents can work, what I've realized is that children are raised by a village, and that community is extraordinarily important. When I first came to this community twenty years ago, there were fairs. Those fairs stopped, and this beautiful property was left to slowly start to fall apart. And when it was purchased, I was really, really happy because I always drove by and admired it. I'm sure we all did, and we're terrorized a week ago with the fires. It's a beautiful site, it's a beautiful property, and to know that it's being developed in the spirit of the owners and what I've learned about more through their actions, what they're doing with these festivals, and when I take my children there, what they've been able to learn. I am a new but very proud American citizen, and around the time I got my citizenship during President Trump's presidency, it was around the time when the festival started there too. And when I went there, I was very surprised to see pillars with printed posters all about the founding fathers and various accomplishments and contributions to humanity from American culture, in greater depth than what my children were coming home and telling me from school. Later, when I went to one of the Chinese festivals, there was this elaborate centerpiece, and on one side were great stories from Chinese history, and then on another side were the American ones. And at the end of this walkway was this giant sign that said virtue. It's very hard for me to find entertainment for my children. I cannot let them go on the internet and find something to watch without being afraid that they are going to be hurt by something. I know that's not gonna happen with what's being produced at New Century. We can look at some of the affiliated productions, and we can see some of this. It's all about promoting traditional values and traditional culture for the good of humanity. And this, to me, is very heartening, and I'm very excited that this is happening in my town. When I was getting my American citizenship, I had to study our history, and I just got so enthralled, and I just kept going because it was so interesting. Classical education being one of the primary parts of our education. And when you do classical education, a student doesn't just study history, they start with their local community so that they understand their environment, and then they spread their awareness of as they go through their ages. Well, I'm lucky that I live down the street from the town historian, and she just happened to publish a book on it. And in that book, there's a wonderful story about the invention of motion pictures for all of humanity happened here in Deer Park. So some things are fortuitous, some things are bigger than us, and that's the sense that I get. It matters to me as a person, it matters to me as a father, and I think it's a phenomenal contribution, an extension of the already great contribution of taking on the responsibility of an extraordinary challenging property in a really challenging place that it was in, and continually bringing the community along for the ride in its development, and it's continuing to do so. So with the heart and spirit of this type of thing, I believe 100% that the responsibility to the environment will be there. My dream was to live at a log cabin in a mountain, and I am living that dream. I love my rural life. I love the fact that you can only build on two and a half acres now. It's maintaining our rural community, and it's beautiful, and I love it. And so I'm really supportive of this project, I'm supportive of my town, I'm supportive of all of us. So thank you very much.
Sally Porter?
Hello, playing board. I'm Sally Porter. I live at 8th Avenue E. Right on the Never Sink, it's a big deal, I think what they're doing is impactful in many ways. Our environment, our culture, I believe in community. I do so much for our community, and I want a vibrant life for our community, but it has to be a fuller picture. It can't just be one culture. It's, I'm not even from this country. I'm, sorry, all over. I would like to see real site plans, real final decisions, current decisions, from, also not their internal parties, but taking consideration outside studies. I know we don't have the finances to do it on our own, but it's a big undertaking. I want festivals, I want community, but I want clean. I want to fish and eat off of our land. It's a big deal for me and my family. I eat out of the river, I forage out of our forests. If we have dirty water, we have dirty rain, our mushrooms, it's a, getting a little, but, so real study plans, current study plans. Who? Who is managing this project? There's many names, and none of them really seem solid. I understand it takes many pictures, pieces to make such a big puzzle, and it's gonna be a beautiful one, but who? Who is responsible for it at the end? Thank you for your time, everybody.
Jack Austin?
Good evening. My name's Jack Austin. I've lived in the area for maybe forty-seven years or so, not as long as some. I have retired from these owner-upward deals here in Deer Park, retired from being a real estate broker and appraiser for about forty years. I welcome the kind of economic development that we're hearing being proposed. It seems analogous to me to the kind of cultural activities at Bethel Woods and some of the other performing arts centers in Orange County, Massachusetts, places like that. To me, what seems paramount is that we really look at the engineering studies to make sure that we protect the Never Sink River. It's something that most of us, I could say all of us, value. But once those issues are dealt with, and they may impact the capacity of the facility- But once those issues are dealt with and they may impact the capacity of the facility, the capacity of the parking garage, et cetera. But once the engineering requirements are met, I'm very much in favor of seeing the proposed development move ahead. I think the community and the region will benefit from it. Thank you.
How many more we got? Three. Kelly Brink.
I'm Kelly Brink, I live on Galley Hill Road. I came tonight to express my concerns, which I've expressed before. I have concerns about the river. I've seen the quote-unquote minimal impact the traffic had on Galley Hill Road, which is a total disaster at this point. The road is so broken. I've seen the pollution in the creek, which runs into the Never Sink. I fear for the amount of pollution that's going to be dumped into the river behind where this project is going up. I find it difficult to believe that I'm a taxpayer too and I would love my taxes to go down, but at the cost of the environment, not so much. I find it hard to believe that this town can support a project of this scope when we can't keep the deli open down the road. I have very little trust that they'll follow through with anything. I know what's gone on with the sewer on our road, which has dumped countless gallons of god knows what into the street. I question the ruralness of this town anymore. And I have concerns about the impact on the environment and the animals. Thank you.
Chin Pang.
Thank you, everyone, thank you for the opportunity here. Thank you for the great words from James. Actually, all the good events, all the group efforts.
Can you say your name?
Oh yes, Jin Pang, I work at 517 Never Sink. I'm a resident of Tom Deer Park. And we do have like a great teams, professional, hardworking supporters from the community, firefighters, police officers, all of this effort bring the community together. Most of you saw I heard a fire on the mountain at the back of New Century about 10 days ago. That's the first time that I felt the natural disaster was so close to me. I drove by many times on Never Sink. I saw how tirelessly firefighters were working to protect our houses. I was deeply touched and felt very proud of being the resident in Tom Deer Park. At 12:30 a.m., so we sent steam pumps and coke to the Huguenot Fire Department, Firehouse. Most of them looked very tired after all the whole three days. When I put the food on the counter, I saw all kinds of food, I pizza all kinds of food from local residents. That's our community. You know, talking about why I wanted to do more community works, including the events. So back to 15 years ago, my mom was arrested in the so-called peaceful Olympic preparation in Communist China because of her spirituality persecuted by Chinese Communist Party. When I collect the petitions on the street, I have been helped like by so many American people in this country. They're nice, righteous, respect freedom, to help me rescue my mom from a brutal persecution. You know, when I became American, US citizen, I want to give back to the community where I live. This is a way to show my appreciation and many of ours who have similar experience back in Communist China. When I talk to the local police chief and officers, police chief and officers and chiefs, we share that while we are bringing the good culture and we also wanted to help with the social problems too in this community. Drug issues, low-income jobs, lack of business opportunities and jobs. We care the environment because we live in the same environment, the same as our kids and grandkids. I like, I believe the engineers are doing their jobs to smoothly convert this beautiful facility to be more useful following the rules and laws. My conclusion today, we want our kids and grandkids to live in a clean, safe, and very important, prosperous community.
Melinda Nyper.
Hi, my name is Melinda Nyper, I'm a resident of Orange County for over 20 years. I've had the honor to meet Jen and be a part of her family and work with her on quite a few occasions. I'm here to tell you that what they do at New Century is fantastic. I mean, I have never been in just a community that's been so welcoming and so warm. I mean, I can call her anytime and she'll work with me or just talk with me as a friend. But one of the things I wanted to talk to you about is unfortunately with the environment, nobody's ever going to be happy. And I should know because we bought our house over 20 years ago on the border of Middletown and the town of Wallkill. We're told that our beautiful woods in the back will always be there. We had endangered species back there, or so we thought. Well, now I have condos in my backyard. So what have I learned? You can't really fight with all this kind of stuff. But what, just, nobody is ever going to be happy, you know, with what's going on, what's being put in our yards and stuff, unfortunately. You can try and fight, you can do the best you can. I advise that you do that, sometimes you win, sometimes you don't. But I have to tell you, has anybody been to Middletown lately? Have you guys really looked around and seen what's going on? I mean, have you seen the school that they have over there, the Northern Academy? It's phenomenal, I totally recommend that you go over there and check it out. I don't know if they're connected with Jen and New Century, but they took the Middletown Psych Center and it's just turning into a beautiful place again. It really is, I have never seen so much pride and respect, you know, for the environment. And they've got some wicked stuff around them. They've got, you know, some condos that constantly have police activities next to them, but yet they're there and they're making a difference. Now I noticed that there's another building in the middle of town that I think, it used to be like a city center or something, but I've seen all this activity, there's some plants being put in the ground and trees and the building is being rehabilitated. I, you know what, honestly, I haven't really looked at this yet, I haven't heard much about it, but I know that these people, okay, that run this New Century, take incredible pride in what they do. And they're not here to hurt us, they're here to help us. They're here to make the environment better. I think that, I think that certain things that can be done a little bit better, probably definitely wastewater, that's a huge issue. But composting and other things, I mean, maybe they can get the Cornell Cooperative Extension involved in some of this to figure out better ways of treating the water and taking care of things. I don't know, there are ways of doing things. And this is the time to do this. And I think that from what I've been seeing in Middletown, if you guys have the opportunity to dig into this, I think you should do it, I really do. And if you have any problems, I've never known them not to be helpful and to help you out and take you seriously. So I wish you all very good luck, thank you so much for your time, have a good night.
Liam O'Neil.
Hi there, members of the board, Liam O'Neil, I'm a resident of Deer Park. And I think Jack Austin summed up what I was going to say very well. Let's pay attention to, you know, the laws on the books, whether they be local or New York State or, you know, Department of Health, et cetera. And beyond that, I mean, this seems like a slam dunk. It seems like, you know, economic activity that will make rural, make our rural life more affordable for more people by bringing jobs here and economic vitality. And, you know, tourism, I mean, I don't know of a better industry. Because people come, they leave their money, and then they leave. And there's not a burden, you know, a tax burden on the town and as long as, you know, the rivers are clean and the septic system works or the sewer system, whatever it is, I think this is a no-brainer. And it's actually, not just my opinion, about 20 years ago, the Deer Park Comprehensive Plan, one time, not so long ago, I was before the planning board and I cited that. The last time Deer Park made a comprehensive plan, some 20 or so years ago, 2003, I think it's dated. If you go through that, all of the goals, so many of the goals are achieved or, you know, are working towards those goals with this plan. So it's not just my opinion that this is good for our town. A lot of other planners and other minds have put forward a similar opinion. Thanks for your time.
Anybody else on the sheet?
Nobody else on the sheet.
All right, so we'll put one call out to the general public here tonight. Somebody cares to speak on the project, just come up to the podium and state your name to the record and we'll give you five minutes. Come on, come on up. After our last public comment, we're going to take five minutes to get up just so we stretch our legs, minor above shot, that work for you?
That's fine, we only have to approach the minutes.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
My name's Dean Su, I live in Park City, in that trail. I've been here for about 30 or 50 years. And thanks to the planning board for...
I need to speak, officer.
Speak out.
Thanks to the planning board for having this public meeting. I think it's really important that we discuss this because when we moved up here, we really wanted to find a rural community, you know, some sort of peace and quiet, you know, multiplicity. For the most part, we did find that. But as you know, you know, across the street from me, there's this development, redevelopment. They've been hammering and they've been building for the last two years, okay? My neighbor actually left because it was too loud. You know, he came up here to escape from city life and he, he's gone. And what you're doing here, I think, is sort of the same thing. You're developing a very rural property. That used to be a farm where they had horses. You know, they had these great festivals once a year, not every weekend, you know? You didn't have this massive influx of people. I've driven over that bridge over the Never Sink. You know, last spring, when it flooded, you know how much garbage was coming off that land and going into the river? I have pictures if you want to see them. You know, all these empty containers, all this trash, this rubbish, you know, it accumulates. If you go back to the property right now, you can see that rubbish. And if you're going to tell me that these people are going to be responsible for cleaning this up, they can't even keep this clean now. So I don't know what you guys are planning. But the thing is, they promised a flea market. I don't see any flea market there. I saw four tables there, one year, that was it. You know, they're talking about a restaurant, they can manage a restaurant? We can't keep restaurants open for service. You have no population out here to support a 500-seat table restaurant. I mean, that's just preposterous, you know? How, you, every time they come before the board and they put something new and they put up new structures, they have new proposition. Have they followed through on any of it? I haven't seen anything. I don't think anybody's seen anything. You know, this is supposed to be public, the gate's closed all the time. The one time it's open is during a festival. Festivals are great, but that's, you know, once in a while. I think you need a comprehensive plan, like I keep mentioning, they keep talking about your comprehensive plan from like 2004 or '05 or something like that, or '07. But there is no comprehensive plan. They can't keep coming forth and saying, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to do that, you know? You have to have something that says, we're going to have 15 buildings done this, this is, we're going to do this in three years, five years we're going to do something else, 10 years we're going to finish. How can you keep coming before the board every, you know, couple of years with a new plan, decide, you know, who knows what? I don't think anybody's seen any movies from any of the productions, I haven't. So, you know, before we even start with this new plan, you know, which has been rehashed like, I think, three times, why don't you come up with like a complete comprehensive plan and have them declare exactly what they plan on doing for the next 10 years instead of every two or three years coming back with something? I appreciate your time, thank you.
I say we take a five-minute, just to stretch our legs. Minor above shot.
No, that's fine. Um, it is likely that the only further business of the board this evening will be to hold the hearing open for written comment for about 30 days and then to approve minutes from a prior meeting. We've got other applications on this evening. So if you wish to stay around for the five-minute break, that's fine. But if you're done, thank you very much for coming.
Yes, thank you, everybody, thank you.